And the chodo, who are our chodo uh did that right now? Is it Fairfax? Alright, and that's the only one that we have going right now?
Yes.
No others have applied to be uh or stated that they want to engage in the conversation? We have not sold out anybody else?
Not right now.
Okay.
So, so what, 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 I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So, what happens with the lighting, uh the, the, the street lighting that one, was that one part that you were talking about that you're working on?
That's separate.
That's separate? Okay, so what lighting are we talking about?
Whatever we decide, whatever the city decided.
Oh, we!
Okay, so, we, do you have a list of, of the lighting that needs to be uh dealt with? Like, we got uh under the bridge of Superior, um at App Foss, people can't hardly see going under that.
The service department gave me a, a total number. They didn't tell me exactly where everyone was.
Okay, so, basically, we can uh pinpoint some of the uh, uh bad areas? Like, for my senior citizens, under uh the Superior area?
I know with the, with, with that area, that, you know, that's still the, the underpass is still the property of Conrail.
No, no, no.
Or CSX.
That's ours.
We, we have that railroad?
No, we, it's not the railroad. It's the lighting underneath there that ours.
Right, but when we made that, when we made that statement against the lighting under there, RTA put their packs up. Because they say that we are governing the underpass part as well. So, who is the other bridge overpasses that?
I don't know.
We have to see who they are because, you know, again, they kinda have some responsibility to them.
But this one is definitely ours.
I'm saying, we don't have a railroad.
No, we don't have railroad.
It is going through.
We have the, the lighting underneath.
We have the walkway.
Yes.
But the walkway, the packs are on the wall though.
Yes.
So, if the packs are on the wall, that's their property still. Isn't, uh, well, RTA said that that was their property, their responsibility, and they put up the lighting. I don't want us to be paying for something that we necessarily can be saying to another entity, uh corporation, "Hey, you cut the grass along your, your, your railway, you're maintaining your railway, and you maintain the underpass." If con- concrete debris is falling, that's a maintenance issue.
If that's theirs. But when I went with Mr.
We don't have any poles standing under those underpasses. They're on the wall.
But when I went with Mr. Bruckett Tally, that's what I'm trying to tell you. The, the lighting that's underneath there is ours. We fixed it before, and it was designated as ours.
Can, can we check and just make, I, I'm saying, it can be, I, I just don't wanna own something and we can send, send a bill to somebody else?
I'm telling you.
And pay for it.
I'm telling you.
But what did they pay for it? Maybe they saved us some money.
Oh, Lord, they will pay for it.
With, uh, also, one thing, I got one thing. Director, uh. There's that many times that, that people have ran into our poles?
Yes.
Have we assessed them? Or assessed their insurance?
Yes, or they've been put on probation and uh they are supposed to be paying while during the course of their probation.
Alright, so, our, our knockdown poles are included in that number? Uh, poles that were hit by vehicles or, and or brought down by semi-trucks going down residential streets or low-wiring streets?
Hundred percent correct.
Hundred percent correct. Alright, so, we, I know we ordered a hundred poles about three years back. We got a hundred poles in here. Those a hundred poles went up, right? We were getting, I, I mean, if we put up a hundred poles, and I know we got a lot of poles in East Cleveland, we were constantly changing our poles since I got back to this, to, to this community. How much more than we have to do? Is that a whole lot? Because I know CEI has to involve with their wooden poles, but our metal poles, I think we don't have to work that, that hard towards it, I think.
Don't quote, don't quote me?
I'm not quoting.
But I, but I believe it's seventy-five poles and fifty lights. Or it's, or it's fifty, it's fifty poles and seventy-five lights.
And, and we've been working toward a more durable pole and a more, more uh, uh, energy-efficient lighting. The LED, the kind of white lighting, and we're getting away from that, that uh, golden-looking, golden-looking light?
I can't, I can give you a spec on it. I don't know if that's appropriate, if that is exactly it, but I'm pretty sure.
And GE, of course, helped us out with no more. Are they interested in helping us with any other street? Do they have any other uh new materials coming out that they may wanna try out? Can you reach out to their engineering department?
Now, one more question, um, for you and paint and copper paint. So, does this mean, since you're going to, Miss Ashley, that we're going to get more into our emergency repairs? Because you got uh two different lists up there. People are on the emergency repair list from last year. And there's still, uh, there's still more, say, for roofing and all of that.
We, we've pretty much exhausted our list. I have about six more that we're looking to do this year. To give you some more, so, just a couple of weeks ago, some actual numbers. From prior year funds, we had eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Budgeted for two thousand fifteen was eighty thousand, which took us to a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. We have on the books right now today, uh, a hundred and twenty-three thousand, which is for the, the emergency repair. Under paint, we had a hundred and nineteen thousand. Then we budgeted ninety thousand. We did a hundred and seventy-one thousand, excuse that, that's emergency repair, the person was painting. A hundred and seventy-one thousand. So, in both of them, it's about forty-six thousand.
Okay, so, so, we have the, you had two lists. And Barbara Johnson was saying that, um, that when the people called, I would tell them to fill out the application. But she said that they would have to come up and put their names on the list as opposed to dealing with the application.
Right, because you can't, you don't want them to fill out the application because the application is only due for six months.
Okay.
If they fill out the application and the date to, for us to get to them exceeds that, they have to do a whole application again. So, we put them on the list and we ask for the application when we're ready to get to them.
So, if we get how much available to, to, at this point, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand or no for emergency?
For emergency, right now, we have about forty-six thousand.
Forty-six thousand.
And we have about six more projects that we're, that I'm about to get out before the end of the year.
So, why do we put so much towards paint?
That, that will hardly do anything.
About four hundred, five hundred.
Is it, is it, is that designated for painting or what is it designated for?
No, that's two separate. We have about forty-six thousand for emergency repair.
Okay.
About forty-six thousand for paint.
Okay, so what is the paint, what does the paint assist though?
It's about forty-six thousand.
What does it do? Is it, what, for painting the house?
Yes.
And we got to contract to paint the house?
They have to bill.
We, we have. We have not ran that, that operation to, to standard. Uh, you know, if I recall, John, Don, Don, what was his name, Don Durus?
We don't, we don't even, we don't even use.
I, I know we, we, but we took a chance, director, is what I'm saying. We took a chance with some individuals. And he had to do the, call the work pro bono or something like that because it wasn't within the scope and we could not pay him. Uh, with those federal funds, we did not pay Durus' cover. We paid him something now?
No, he was paid.
Alright, now, you know, I was told at first it was pro bono, and then now we're being, now I'm being told he's paid. Okay, now he's paid. I, I'm just trying to understand because I know I was told pro bono. The work was done, it's charged off as pro bono. Uh, you know, again, I, I can prove that part. Now I'm being told he's paid, that's fine. Just when we, when, when we're looking at this paint operation, you know, I, 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 I believe that operation would be politically driven. I just don't think that we should have allocated that, you know, high of a source of amount of money for, for paint. I, I think it should have, we, we stated time and time again that emergency repair or home repair is the biggest, uh, you know, ne- necessity within our community. Paint may not be the highest of the priorities. And I think we keep, we keep shelling money to that area that, you know, then makes, you know, I'll see seniors, I'm glad I'm getting my house painted. I, 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 I want seniors' houses to get painted, don't get me wrong. But I would rather them have a, a house that's not falling down than a house that painted and falling down. So, 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 keep in mind, when, when I filled out that survey and you got, you know, I, I, I come to each meeting that you have when it's time to decide these funds, and I keep saying, we need to minimize the amount. We could go to a wholesale place and get a gallon of paint for twenty dollars and stuff like that, and, and it can be two houses used on that gallon of paint. Those, those drums of paint that, that are used. But I'm just saying, can we please stop giving so much money to this paint program and reallocate it to emergency repair?
Well, what do you wanna do with it? Now, here's your chance, if you want, if you say you wanna reallocate X amount of.
I just hope my colleagues agree with me that emergency repair is the biggest, you know, priority.
That's what I say. I said that.
Paint is not the biggest priority.
If you look at it, if you look at our, or our proposed budget, we only asked for fifty thousand.
I don't, I think that's too much.
And I would just do about seven or eight homes.
Emergency repairs? Seven or eight homes that, to pay, seven or eight homes under fifty thousand dollars?
Do you still have a few month dollar fund, prior year funds?
Yes.
I understand, I, I'm just saying, you can, you can get seven homes for fifty thousand dollars?
There's still a few dollars from prior year funds that will go into that. There's about forty-six thousand.
I can get a lot of homes for fifty thousand.
The only difference, that, let me, if I can make this point, the only difference when you're using federal funds, the houses have to pass a lay clearance. So, to paint a house is a little bit more. I could give you every single address, but you can go look. We, we don't pass a house if it's not done correctly. They have to be scraped, they have to pass a lay clearance, and there's minor repairs to go with that. We put a cap of a thousand dollars on minor repairs to make sure that the house is up to grade to even be painted. So, we painted seventeen houses this year.
I just think that we still need to minimize.
That the total cost of? The total cost is around seven thousand on the house.
But I, I, I just think that we, again, again, emergency repair, a house falling apart, is far more important than, than a house that may have some chip paint here and there. I want seniors' houses not to fall apart. I want them to be insulated properly. I, I think that, that, again, our, the preservation, and the preservation of our, our, the woodstock of our community is, is far more important than, than just addressing those minor cosmetics, is what I'm saying.
When we had the public meeting, that's why we had the public meeting, so people could say what they wanted and what they didn't want. So, people could say they wanted it, so, but if, if, if you agree to say you don't want no money in paint, I could care less. I want whatever you want if you wanna put all the money in emergency repair. That's what I want.
I, I just, I'm not saying all of the money in emergency repair, but I want the, the consideration to be primarily the emergency repair situation so we can, can begin to stabilize our community in that respect. I, I mean, I'm one voice. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm expressing myself to my colleagues. I think I took enough time, but, you know. I really, really would love for our federal funds to be executed properly and it be, you know, not to say you're not doing a good job or anything like that, I'm not saying that. Uh, I'm just saying that, that our mindset is not building from within as far as it relates to preservation of our, our.
Well, I think that last year, I, I, it was expressed that we needed, um, more money in the emergency, um, repair. And I think that, that you're doing a heck of a job, uh, with the emergency repair because it's getting done. I just didn't, uh, I saw the two lists, and I was, when they called me, and believe me, they're calling, these people need help, and one of the ladies, um, that you did do some work on, on calling, it was excellent. Um, Miss Fanny's got hers painted, that, that was good painting. Uh, there's several that we, we, that was really done good. And if we had knocked out those, um, those, uh, lists, I'm, I'm really unsatisfied. But we, those, the houses are falling down around me. Uh, but my, my, my concern is that if you're going to pass something here, which is the, uh, action plan, make sure that this is what you want because after the fact, you didn't already pass it, this is a one-year action plan.
We can go back and make an amendment.
To.
It probably, it probably will be happening in that regard.
Um, I understand, I understand, but you don't have to do it. In, in, in the beginning, if you talked about, you went to a meeting, somebody else went to a meeting, and you talked about what you wanted. So, I'm just saying, if we got lighting here and we got, um, the emergency, which I think is, uh, really, really important, then we need to, uh, to deal with that lighting. Because our lighting is causing, um, problems and confusion and, and, uh, and complicating and whoever is talking down there, then we should get some results. But if, if, if the power of five, which is the councilor here, can say, this is, we are in, in, um, a positive mode to have this done with Miss Ashley, I don't know. That would be more powerful than anything else. But I think it would give more credence if we had the councilor saying, yes, this is what we want.
Parks and Recreation Facilities is on, uh, page five, it says, uh, prior year funds is fifty thousand dollars. What was, what was that used for?
We ca- I kept that there, I put it in the budget. I had spoke with Councilwoman Thomas about a park. And we would leverage that money to build a park, like a park or something.
It was not, and so, is that a carryover or it went back? Okay. Alright, so, a carryover now, okay, didn't, it didn't get spent in Parks and Recreational Facilities, where is it now?
It still stays there.
It stays right there, so that should be reflected in the twenty, it wasn't in the next column. Is it gonna be?
It'll just stay there, it's just prior to be, prior to your funds.
And so, could that be rerouted?
Why?
I'm, I'm just saying, is, is it a possibility that, is that restricted?
Okay.
So, so, alright, Parks and Recreational Facilities, if, if this council or identifies use for that money can, you know, that be noted within this plan? Because there are some maintenance concerns with, with the parks. We talked about, um, the back of Martin, the case of the center. We talked about the lower valley, uh.
It's just, it's only certain things that we can't.
What, what are the uses of upgrades for?
So, we couldn't, we couldn't do, like, under street maintenance, we can't fix potholes. We have to do a major resurfacing. So, if it, it has to, it depends on what the use is for that.
You can't cut out a section though.
It has to be a large section.
Terrace is very long, but I'm just saying that I'm, I'm on Parks. Parks and Recreational Facilities, I noted that, now, now, maybe I'm throwing this out there, but along that terrace route right there at, at Forest Hills Boulevard is that, uh, bowling lawn, and that's an entrance there, um, and it's also the lower valley. And then as you go further down terrace is that Beersford entrance going up to Forest Hills, uh, Park, Main Park. Um, that could possibly be a use there, um, because it's serving the route that, I, I think it's about the way you articulated it, right?
It has to be a service to the center, so I, I don't have, I don't know.
There is a need there, but I'm just saying, if you look into that, you know, that, that, along that, that, uh, terrace road route and three entrances to parks that service the community, maybe there can be some CBPG, uh, use for that particular area.
Uh, any more, uh, questions? I'll steal down my part.
Can I be dismissed?
Yes.
Ma'am.
Your phone.
I, I gotta, I gotta.
Gentlemen, ladies.
Took too long.
So, just for clarity, how many houses painted here?
Seventeen people.
Seventeen. And you use up all of the funds that you get allowed for painting houses left here?
There's about forty-six remaining, forty-six thousand.
Forty-six thousand remains?
Mm-hmm.
What about emergency repairs?
Six, there's about forty-six thousand.
Uh, thank you for staying as long as you can, yeah, Martin.
How many, how many emergency repairs did you make? You made seventeen emergency repairs too? Okay. So, based, based on, based on those numbers, it, it would seem like it would be okay if something had here. They not, it's unfortunate that they leave, but they will here, but they will come back and, you know, say what they said. If they didn't know, not share information, but that's important, I understand. And I, and I think that the numbers that he has here are fine, but he wouldn't have put them here if they weren't. And painting a house has numerous benefits and it's, it's more expensive than I think some people realize. Because by the time you fix it up and then you don't buy a dollar paint, that's the worst thing you can do is put a dollar paint on a house. So, I'm, I'm fine with what he has as a rate.
I don't have a problem. I'm talking about the other thing, I'm not talking about cosmetic painting and what it should not be. I'm talking about emergency, uh, funding, and that's what I'm talking about. Painting is cosmetic, we can do that if you want to, you know, but I'm not talking, I'm talking about the people's houses that are falling down around me.
We just, we just covered that as well.
I understand, I just, what I said.
How many, how many did they do last year?
Pardon?
How many do last year?
He said he did what, seven?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? So, I have no problem. I'm just saying, I'm still saying, my priority is emergency. I'm not telling them to move anything.
Okay, so, so, understand, my question was how many that you did, and then is there any funds left?
Yeah.
So, there are funds left, and he still did a significant number of houses. So, I don't think anything needs to be moved, and he would, he would know it best and what's needed where. So, I ju- I just wanted to get that clear.
Well, what are you talking to me about moving, and I haven't asked you?
Because that was, that was a lot of conversation.
Oh, okay, but, but you're looking directly at me and I'm telling, I'm wondering what you're talking about.
Well, they left.
I don't be listening to this, no, okay? I'm just, I'm looking at the, uh, the, the whole big picture of passing a one-year action plan and getting the, the most, and the most bang for the buck out of the, uh, this. Because after the action plan is passed, then you got a lot of gromping and, why didn't you do this and why didn't you do that? I wanna make sure that when I'm sitting here, and I'm putting Barbara Thomas's name on this passage or supporting it gets done, and I know what's going on, that I can't do that.
She gonna do it.
So, if everything, if everybody here is satisfied with the.
She gonna do it anyway.
The, um, uh, action plan the way it is, we, uh, is the consensus that we take fifty-six, fifteen on up to, uh.
That's a lot of money.
Are you agreeing?
Yeah.
Alright, moving right along, that's we'll go on to the agenda for, uh.
I just, can I make a side note?
Uh, where you going, Mr. Lee?
Can I make a side note?
Yes.
We sit up here and we talk about meetings, and we're talking about funding and finance. And that's important. It, 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 it lets us know what we can spend money on and what we can't spend money on. When we spending money on frivolous things, that, that's not, they burn, like politics. We spending money on that, but we got, we, we got issues challenging us and we're not discussing.
Come on, you're getting that goal again.
So, I, I don't know, that's the one, we know that I have a problem.
Well, well, I will take it, okay? And I, I, like I said, if I don't, uh, in- involve myself in, in politics, like, uh, we're talking about, then I say, well, if I can take the message much more for that. And the ultimate end is those politics, uh, did not succeed.
Get nothing, one pothole, then get one more, police car on the street, and just stretch our, our finances again.
But, no, uh, but what I'm saying to you is what we're doing here right now, we're taking care of this.
Right, and we all should be at the table.
Okay, so, I thank you. Moving right along, uh, do you have that, uh, Ms. Thack? Uh, fifty-six, fifteen, the consensus is that it will go, uh, on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, moving right along to fifty-seven, fifteen.
Resolution number fifty-seven dash fifteen. A resolution requesting the City of East Cleveland's participation in the tax advancement program of the Cuyahoga County Budget Commission to facilitate tax advances in twenty sixteen pursuant to section three-two-one-point-three-four of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency. Request by Finance Director and sponsored by Council President Barbara Thomas.
Madam Clerk, I will sponsor, um, fifty-seven, fifteen, and will move for its adoption. I'm sorry. The lady's not on the.
They ain't even.
Yeah, um, so, we're, here's the chair. So, this is something that the, um, the, um, Law Director has said is a necessity that will help us. It's set every year. Back, yeah, and it is a natural thing that happens every year, it's nothing different. Um, so, is there any discussion on this? Anybody got any questions, whatever? Or anybody need any clarity? What is the consensus of the, uh? Okay, removing this, uh, fifty-seven, fifteen, uh, to the, uh, to the agenda. Madam Clerk, may I?
Ordinance number fifty-nine dash fifteen. An ordinance to amend ordinance ten dash fifteen, uh, twenty-fifteen permanent budget appropriations and declaring an emergency for the public's safety, health, and welfare to fund city operations as required by the Ohio Fiscal Commission. Requested by Director of Finance, sponsored by Council President Barbara Thomas.
Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Clerk, uh, I will sponsor fifty-nine, fifteen, and move for its adoption. As I, oh, I'm sorry. How you know? Discussion?
Uh, please, 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 my lady, please, that was just a little jaguar. Remember, you guys know what that, you can't?
Oh, we didn't, we said, hey, we ain't.
What, you guys, you guys remember? That's what the vice.
What, I thought one of you.
It is.
See, it's about there.
Alright, I'm fine.
Uh, is there any more discussion on this, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam, uh?
Well, fifty-eight, uh, fifteen is the temporary appropriations for three months for two thousand sixteen, I understand that, uh, that we discussed two days.
That's right, that's right, right. Jaguar's coming up to me, right, that's right. You know, you, we scheduled this based off of that.
No, he's off, he's on vacation this week. So, we will deal with it, uh, he will come in and he will get a chance to, you know.
So, for clarity on this last one, this is just the budget that we passed. Now it's more reflective of what actually happened.
Yes. This is like post, you know, ex post facto, after the fact.
I guess.
Alright?
Yes.
Is everybody in, uh, sight for this? Alright. Uh, we will move, uh, to the agenda of that, and make sure you have the, um, minutes. Oh, what am I doing there? Uh, what, do that, do. Remarks of the public.
Thank you all for staying as long as you have. I do think that, again, with respect to the issues addressed in the previous meeting, that to the extent that they could be moved on expeditiously, I think that would be very advantageous to the public as well. I also think that, looking at the, the one-year plan, the fact that that can be amended, um, readily, and if that amendment amount is under fifty thousand dollars, if there's still need even for a public notice, if it's over fifty thousand dollars, you can use the public notice, that I, I would also suggest expeditious. that I, I would also suggest expeditious movement forward on that, because there's no reason, if you have reservations, you can then make those reservations known subsequently and make the necessary adjustments. I do think going forward, it would be, it would best serve the interests of the collective to make sure that there is collective input in all decisions that, that occur. And so that everything that leaves, in effect, with the name of the city, has the mandate of the entire, the entire city, both administrations and council, but that that should not necessarily stymie research and looking into, into something. That people should feel free to explore anything that's of benefit to the city. And again, with respect to the previous meeting and the twenty thousand dollar figure, whether or not the fees, um, from the PEG channel, the PEG fees, amount to that amount. I think that it's a vital service to the community for people to have access to the information, especially at this juncture where people are being, are coming up to making the most, the most important decision in the history of the City of East Cleveland, which is potentially whether to remain a city or not. That this is not the time to have darkness on the channel, this is not the time to have the council separated from the population. It's also not the time to have a single public official, namely the mayor, dominating the narrative on the air. So thank you very much, Council, and congratulations, Councilman Wheeler, on winning your recall election.